Hey, good morning, everyone. Here, call this, me and the county commissioners to order the first item of my agenda is the approvals of April 3rd, 2025, the motion approved.
No move.
Seconded, seconded, any change?
As approved. Or as written.
They're not hearing any changes, all those in favor of adoption, Jamie, you're saying I agree. Those opposed, the motion and the item two is to authorize the child advocacy center grant, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, I'm surprised we're even still getting this.
We're getting half of it.
We're getting half of it?
For six months, hopefully, we'll, all the funding comes through with the state budget.
It's a state grant, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay. So, there's no federal money in that?
No, it's, it's a state grant and the, because the state doesn't know what their budget's gonna look like from July 1st, they're just giving us the half, the half that was approved in the last biannual budget.
Okay. Gotcha, so you need a motion?
Yeah.
So move. Okay, seconded, seconded.
So, this is the very thick grant document that'll need to be signed, so.
I'll, I'll sign and do it.
Yeah, the, the, the top will be for the three of you to sign, and then you have other things to sign, George an initial and everything, and then Sean has to sign this as the clerk.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
You can do something.
Alrighty, okay, the vote unanimous, do we accept that grant?
Yes.
Okay. Item three is to acknowledge occupational therapy month, okay, Christine, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you? Thank you for your time, I'll be brief this morning, I just wanted to again take the opportunity to talk about occupational therapy and April's occupational therapy month. Um, it's not as commonly known therapy as physical therapy, um, so that's why I wanted to highlight it today. Uh, occupational therapy goes back, um, into like World War I, and there, we were originally called reconstructive aids.
I'm sorry, I.
Reconstructive aids, so, um, it was determined at that time that using occupation was a way for soldiers to kind of improve, um, their health, mental health and physical health, so they used occupation, um, which is daily tasks such as bathing, dressing, um, it was back in the arts and crafts movement, so it's been longstanding. Um, at Riverside, we do provide, uh, we have two full-time occupational therapists, um, so we'll do the self-care skills, bathing, dressing, promoting. We also, um, will assess how someone's doing with their feeding, eating, swallowing, so that's part of your daily occupations. Um, and we also do a cognitive assessment, which I had talked about before, which is called a MOCA, so we've been getting that as baseline for residents that come in, and we get updated, um, cognitive assessments for residents, it helps the providers with medication management, and also it helps with care planning.
Who, who initiates that?
The cognitive assessment?
Yeah.
Um, well, it's something that we're starting to do with every resident that is admitted, so we get a baseline, and then when the providers feel like, um, they're spreading some kind of cognitive change, that they seem more confused, or just wanna get an update, again, it's a consideration if, um, their power of attorneys be activated, uh, they use that as a resource.
Right, and another thing is, uh, could you, the interface between physical therapy and occupational therapy?
What do we have in?
Well, what, you know, what, what's the difference, I guess, in other words, where's that line, the definition of, of either one?
Sometimes it really isn't aligned, they blend together, um, and in fact, as you know, when you reviewed this year's budget, our physical therapist went down to three days a week instead of five, so that's put additional pressure on Christine and coworker, uh, to, and Christine's been kind enough to pick up, um, some things that can officially overlap, consistent with her license, and consistent with the license of a physical therapist, but, you know, the, the, the biggest thing, and, and I know Christine says it, uh, but will highlight it, is, is, I'd like to highlight it, is the eating. Uh, we want to, can you just explain a little bit about the, the diet, uh, and what we're doing, um, that not many places are doing?
There's this initiative that's taking a global initiative, it's called ITSE, uh, International Dyspasia Diet Standardization. Um, so basically, we're placing, um, uh, food items are in categories, and based on that, those categories would determine what food is safe, uh, a regular texture, or if you need to change it. Uh, if an individual's having problems with chewing, um, so preparing the food, uh, to safe and swallow, or if they're having swallowing dysfunction, um, due to disease progression, we have to modify their, their food texture, and sometimes they're liquids, um.
Well, how many patients do we have with that problem? I, I, I know about the problem because my father-in-law had it, and it was, he had to puree everything, and that's very time-consuming, and, you know, it's.
There is a lot, I mean, it's something, uh, with our dietitian, uh, we really have collaborated, collaborated a lot with her, uh, in terms of, um, doing the menus and understanding, because if, if someone has, um, a different diet level, then they have different food options, so again, some food items will come pureed, some would be ground. We do have a large, um, amount, I don't have a, an exact percentage for you.
Well, I'm just a, a rough, a rough idea of what.
Um, our unit five, we probably, probably at least have, have some kind of food modification, um, and it's not necessarily, and we try to make it so it's very individualized per person. Uh, sometimes we don't have to change the entire diet, sometimes if they're just having difficulty with meat, then we'll just change the meat texture. So it's really, it is time-consuming, it is fluid.
Right, well, I see, the cost, that's what I'm getting at.
The other, the other part of this is though, is that, you, there's a certain enjoyment in eating, look at me, I'm the classic example, um, and, and if we can make the texture, pureed diets aren't a favorite of, of pretty much anybody that has them.
Looks all same.
Uh, and, and if we can en- enhance the texture, because a, a resident that we have doesn't need a pureed diet, but can have something in between, and still safely, you know, eat that, uh, that's, that's the real goal here. And the other goal that we learned, um, and, and Christine's been doing over the last several years, is educating the families, um, who really need to understand what they can bring in for their loved ones, you know, that sometimes their favorites aren't, you know, just aren't available anymore to eat, uh, out of worry of aspiration pneumonia, um, primarily, um, and choking, but usually it's choking that, that ends up with aspiration pneumonia, so they reswallow the food that goes in their lungs, and then they, and then we're fighting an aspiration pneumonia, which in some cases, not a very frail resident, you know, can have serious ramifications, uh, 'cause it's not like that's their only problem, you know, their only medical problem, so, uh, Christine's done a really nice job of educating families about what not to bring in, more notably, and what an alternative is to bring in, instead of what that item was.
The family outreach, um, has been a significant part whenever any changes are made, um, it does help, um, for family members to understand, um, what is safe, so they can provide an alternative, um, different option, or if they're just like, you know, you know, my mom loves Harvey's Donuts, and I want them to have that, even if they're on a pureed texture, they will, you know, make that choice and understand the risks that are involved. Um, and so I think that's been received really well by families, um, our social services department, um, you know, is also, um, a key factor in terms of communicating if families do have any concerns, you know, they know where to reach out, and it's helpful that we're there on site, uh, we see a lot of family members when they come in, um, and we will do like a one-to-one education, um, and help as well, 'cause some families, family members will assist, uh, their loved one as well, so they're educated, um, as to how to provide, whether it's hot food or liquids, um, to their one as well.
How much do you spend on the, uh, that clue, that stuff that they swallow with the material? With the food?
There's, well, we don't add anything to the food, um, it's just, it's prepared differently. Uh, are you thinking about the diagnostic tests?
No, not the tests, no, it's, I know, I know they had, uh, my father-in-law had this, so I.
For the thickened liquids?
Right.
I do not know the cost of that, I, I guess we can get the cost as to what.
That'd be interesting, because I.
I'll get it for you out of the dietary budget.
Yeah, you, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yes, sir, I do.
Um, we also use, uh, liquid thickener as well, sometimes with medications, you know, we'll do that as well.
Right, right, wow, 'cause I, I know I take a handful of pills every day, both morning and night, I need to, sometimes a little hard to get them all down at once.
Give me a change of brand of whiskey.
Yeah, I, I wish I could use the whiskey, Scotch, good Scotch whiskey too.
I was gonna suggest pudding, but.
That's the difference between an occupational therapist and somebody who's lived life.
Right, physical therapy? And us raging alcoholics. Yeah, well, you guys do a great job over there, thanks for coming in and sharing. You started that ITSE program while we've come a year or two ago.
Oh.
Not, not all. I was surprised, I, as you know, I covered a, another county nursing home last summer, and they don't have, they, they have not adopted the ITSE program, uh, which is surprising, because their hospitals will discharge a resident on an, an ITSE diet, and they have to then interpret that diet in a different way, where we can simply just take the code that they give us.
We're speaking the same language.
We're speaking the same language, yeah, that's, sorry, best way to put it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, again, Christine, you gotta do a great job, keep up the good work. You gentlemen all set?
Yeah, good.
No?
Alrighty. Thanks, kids.
Alright, next is update on the sewer project, how we doing?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
I'm happy to report to everyone that the sewer project, uh, is going quite well. Uh, anytime that we have had, uh, new discoveries in the sewer system, and they've been able to pivot quickly and make repairs and head, uh, head forward, we have currently three runs right now, um, C building is obviously square, and one goes down the administrative hallway, one goes through PT, and the other one for the kitchen goes through, excuse me, one goes through activities, and then the other goes through PT from the kitchen, uh, they were able to dig the pits, and we were able to get less than forty-eight hours of outage, so as of tomorrow morning, when the sewers go back online for C building, we'll have one more run, running down past laundry from B building. It could be complicated, but, uh, I've seen these guys perform, and they've been wonderful the entire time. Looking forward to getting everything, uh, back in place.
So, as a, as a little bit of humor, frequently people would come in my office and say, yeah, it smells a little funny in here. You know, I, I lost my sense of smell during COVID, so digging down in, in front of my office, they found that about this much of the pipe was gone. So it was dropping into an, another pipe down below, but it was just kinda dropping.
Just dropping, yeah.
Yeah, just dropping in there, so.
I did go and take a look at that.
You did see it, at the end of the day, you were there.
There, yeah.
But they found that, that was nice.
I tried to touch it, yeah.
Very, very, um, the camera inspection, um, you know, gave us, uh, gave us a clue, but really didn't reveal the entire condition.
Right.
Um, what they do, um, when they open up both ends of the pipe, they run a chain, uh, rotating chain to, sort of to bride the pipe and remove any scale before they run the liner down there, and sometimes the pipe couldn't, would stand and start raining in.
Right.
Um, so we had to dig a couple additional pits and areas, so they can repair sections of that pipe.
I, I'm just surprised that when I'm in a situation, we gotta do the whole place, because the, the pipes just look so, they just look so good.
Yeah, we've been really fortunate that, uh, you know, nothing, we haven't had any other major collapses since we had that one a couple years ago.
That line will, you know, had a lot of life to what we left there.
Yeah, they're saying fifty years.
Fifty years.
I, I will tell you that these gentlemen are skilled, very skilled.
Yeah.
I got to watch my first insert yesterday, and, and, uh, they're, they're really very skilled, um, and they really know what they're, guy really knows what he's did. Lead of the group really knows what he's doing.
Yeah, I'm really selective with vendors, and who I let work on the place, and, uh, we're really, I had a home of these guys.
I watched them at, I watched them go out, they did a pretty good job.
So, hopefully next week, they'll be done.
Yeah, I hope by the end of next week we'll be done, and we can get everybody back to normal.
Okay. Good news, let's move on to the high-top roof project, we got a half a mile there.
Yeah, we had another win there, uh, the roof project was completed on Friday, uh, the materials should be out by the end of today, and, um, they cleaned up, and you can barely tell they were there, the roof looks wonderful. There was, uh, two sheets applied with the need to be replaced, and, yep, and a section of trim, and strangely enough, one was from where the satellite dish was installed, so. Probably moving that off onto a mast, they're gonna find a decorative mast that must be utility looking, to get the light dish back in operation. Residents there are currently using, um, Roku and other streaming services to watch, uh, television, which they've been doing all along, they haven't been using the DirecTV that much.
But, um, and, and I don't know, sir, if you saw the pictures, but you had asked at one of the prior meetings about.
No, ice and water field, yeah, I sent a picture over, um, last week of, uh, what, after they stripped the roof, when they put the ice and water, and it was right.
All the way up, all the way up.
Beautiful, that's awesome.
Yeah.
It'll make that a hell of a lot better.
Yeah, yeah, it's all the way up.
Matter of fact, fifty years, probably give seventy-five.
Well, I was trying to joke it, it was gonna rain the next day, 'cause they were taking the day off, it was last Thursday, and I said, he's, no, don't worry, you know, they've got the shield going all the way up.
Yeah, they did a great job, very pleased.
Okay. Good news. Alright, we got a list of upcoming events, uh, we moved to item seven, which is the older new business, you got the older new business? No, okay.
I have one.
Diane?
Um, it's with regards to our Rochester childcare C V G grant. Um, Donna Lane has reached out, they need to file an extension, um, for the project, um, it was due to be done in June.
Right.
So, um, that's not going to happen, um, so she's requesting an extension through December thirty-first of this year. So there's a document that Ray needs to sign, and I need Sean as the clerk to certi- certify that.
Okay. That's no problem. I mean, that was some difficulty, that, that, doing that work.
It seems they had a problem with the vendor, they, they acquired, and they had a problem with the vendor, and they selected a new vendor,
Yeah.
but the timing was such that it delayed the project.
So that's just for Ray and Sean, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a good side.
Okay.
Alrighty. Any other older new business, from anybody? Alright, then, item eight is questions and comments from the public regarding the agenda of the commission, where I received a letter from Jennifer Patches, I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Jennifer is on the same.
She is, okay. Uh, hi, Jennifer.
Hi.
Jimmy.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hear you, yeah.
Okay. It's Patches.
It's Patches, okay, alright, thank you. Uh, where are you from, Jennifer?
I'm from Boston, um, my father is, or was Peruvian.
Okay. And you live in Boston now?
No, 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 I, I, I was born in Boston, I live up here now.
Okay, alright, you, you're a resident of Stratford County?
Yes.
You are, okay, alright. Well, we, we were in receipt of, a receipt of your, uh, your concern regarding having a full-time shelter here, uh, in our region, and, uh, I don't know how much background you have on this, but this has been something that's been, been discussed for the past ten years or so, eight to ten years. Uh, there are a number of, of, uh, legal hurdles regarding the creation of such a shelter, uh, which you're probably not aware of, the county, the county is not, uh, legally responsible for these folks, the municipalities are. Uh, and that was a change in the law that took place in nineteen eighty-seven, here in New Hampshire, taking the counties out of what's known as the direct relief assistance business. The reason why the colony administers this contract now is at a, at a request of the three municipalities, uh, um, here in Stratford County, the cities of Dover, Somersworth, and Rochester. So it is really a determination has to be made by those folks as to whether or not the shelter would stay open year-round. Uh, there are a number of facilities in Stratford County and, uh, crossroads in Portsmouth that, that help provide housing, uh, uh, for those folks that are in transition. Uh, so, uh, it's, uh, we've had multiple, multiple groups looking at what we could do to, to deal with the, uh, the homeless situation here, which is a national problem, uh, without anyone suffering from this. But the mayors have been working, and there's been a number, there's been numerous study committees put together to talk about how they were gonna handle it, but in the end, um, because of the, the difficulty of the population we're talking about, uh, there isn't, it's not like there's a lack of will, there's just a, it's just the dynamics of where it would be placed, and how it would be paid for, so that's where we sit right now. Uh, that discussion is still ongoing, it's frustrating, uh, to a certain extent, but it is a difficult population, and there are a number of dynamics that are involved with, uh, this, it's not simply just building a shelter and putting much people in. Uh, it's been found nationally, and that usually doesn't work, uh, without some form of wraparound services. Uh, and also, many of those folks have mental health issues, which in the state of Hampshire is, the state of New Hampshire is responsible to deal with mental health issues, uh, not the local governments, and the state's been, depending on who you talk to, and, and the multiple opinions that have existed over the last fifty years, the state's done, sometimes does a good job, sometimes it does a poor job. Uh, and so that's, uh, that's kind of some background for you. So, uh, the commissioners, uh, act in a fiduciary capacity on behalf of the municipalities, but it's really the municipality's call, uh, and the, and matter of fact, there are specific statutes that prevent the county from acting in that capacity. Uh, so, for that said, um, I don't disagree with your letter. Its intent, I think, is, uh, is, is noble, uh, but you have to also understand that there are a lot of other people who agree with you, the question is, it's just how is it gonna get done? And how's it get paid for, and that's really what it goes down to.
And we did, we did forward the correspondence to the mayors that she announced.
Right, right, we did forward, yeah, we forwarded that, your correspondence to the mayors and city managers, and the local welfare directors as well, so.
Oh, thank you. Um, could some of our tax dollars help to fund this?
Well, your tax dollars are fun, well, depending on where you live, uh, at present, um, right now, the, the funding of the shelter is being borne by, uh, the three municipalities, even though the, the towns are contributing to the population as well, uh, but at present, your property, the property tax is supporting about half the cost of the shelter, uh, uh, under its present operational guideline. Um, there's fifty thousand dollars coming from Dover, fifty thousand dollars coming from Rochester, and Somersworth is, uh, is contributing in-kind contributions for police and fire protection, and ambulance services. So that's how it's being handled at the present, and the state has made, through the county, a hundred thousand dollars towards that, uh, this operation, uh, with the state's, um, effort to, uh, address homelessness in the municipalities. And that money is funneled through the county, again, and the commissioner's acting in a fiduciary capacity for that, so that's how the present funding scheme, uh, but it's only for emergency uses only, because Willand Center does not need the, uh, the relative codes that we have now in New Hampshire for housing people twenty-four seven, it's an emergency warming center, it's designed to be only, uh, only activated during lifesaving, uh, weather conditions. Uh, and so it's not a full-time shelter, uh, and, and what you would normally consider to be, uh, uh, the, the normal interpretation of what a shelter is, it's, it's simply to be, to, to protect and save lives, and the facility itself is not, not designed to be open twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, it would need, it would, it would need extensive renovation, uh, and the city of Somersworth, uh, city of Dover actually owns the building, the city of Somersworth has been kind enough to host it for the past four or five years, while we come up with another solution, uh, but Somersworth has indicated to, to everyone that they want it moved, um, from Somersworth, so that's the, the bigger discussion that we're having now, as to where it's going to go.
Oh, they want it.
Sadia? Yeah, I'm sorry, what did, what were you saying?
I was gonna say they want it out of Somersworth altogether, because I understand the Holy Trinity Church is going up for sale, and I know they're particular about what they're gonna be putting in there.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, um, but that's certainly something, we've looked at, we've, we've had an opportunity to look at a number of sites, uh, in Stratford County, at where, where a shelter could be. The difficulty becomes, how, how does it get paid for? That's usually, that, that's usually the, the bigger thing, and, and usually the conversion of existing buildings is difficult to meet the, the present codes that we have in our state for safety.
Right.
And so, and so, in, in many instances, it's, it's cheaper to, to build something new than it is to try to convert or renovate an old existing building. Uh, um, we looked at another, we looked at another church property here in Stratford County, uh, to do the same thing with, but, uh, again, it's, it's a matter of how you're gonna, how we're gonna pay for it, and, and the dynamics of who pays, and how it's administered, and then you've got to operate it, and you've got to pay for its operation.
Right.
In most cases, whenever the government does anything, building a building is usually the cheap part, it's how to pay for it, operationally wise, over the course of a year, is where the big expense comes in. So, uh, so anyway, um, I hope that answers some of the, gives you some background as to where things sit. There are a number of groups in Stratford County right now that are trying to do something, trying to come up with some solutions, uh, to the problem. Uh, but this population is an extremely complex population, uh, they usually, we tend to, we tend to try to stereotype people, but there are a lot of people who are becoming homeless as a result of the increased cost of housing. Uh, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily people who are, that have a substance abuse problem or a mental health problem.
Right.
We have other people, we've got five and eight years, depending on which housing authority you talk to, we get anywhere from a five or an eight-year waiting list, uh, for housing, we haven't built any new federal housing in a very, very long time, uh, assistance through our housing authorities. So we all have housing authorities that are, that are supposed to be looking at these issues as well, um, but, uh, we haven't built any.
Why is that?
Fifty-two beds. Yeah, fifty-two beds, yeah, so.
Do you know why that, that nothing's been built in so long?
Well, it's, it's, it's federally funded, that's the, that's the issue, uh, and, uh, there have been attempts throughout, along, a long period of time, where we've built federal housing, and then the housing authorities, authorities operated, um, and they just never had a lot of, ton of money available for new construction, uh, for a month, for a varying number of political reasons.
Oh.
Depending on the nature of which administration is in power, and how much, how much we can draw down by the feds, um, so it's, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough issue.
Yes.
And, and, and as the cost of housing continues to rise, uh, it makes it, puts additional pressure on, you know, the lower class and the, and the middle class, of, you know, which is where my empathy lies, always has, um, so your, your, your words aren't falling on deaf ears, it's just a matter of how we're gonna get there.
And we're working on it.
And we are working on some alternatives, yeah, so. That's the best, I, I can tell you right now.
No, I appreciate all of your time and your concern, and, you know, I. No, I appreciate all of your time and your concern and, you know, I, I'm grateful that, you know, things are hopefully progressing slowly, but hopefully, you know, someday we can find the resources and, you know, get some housing for these people because when they're out on the street, it's, you know, fight or flight. They're in survival mode. They don't, they're not in the right frame to say, oh, I wanna better myself when, you know, they're just looking to stay alive through the night, you know, sleeping in the woods. And I understand it's, it's a tough situation. But I thank you all for your time.
Okay, lovely. Thank you.
Alright. God bless. Thank you.
We'll talk soon. Alrighty. Any other questions or comments you got to leave us, Susan?
No, I'll let you off this way.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty. Not giving any more comments from the public, balancing emotional mood in a non-public session, discussing personnel, in contract negotiation, get emotionally improved and competitive, roll call from.